Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 18th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being televised live and being taped by Foxborough Cable Access. That's what I'm supposed to say, right? Okay. All right, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dennis, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So I'm going to start the meeting with a joint statement. Mr. Cordier and the town has mutually agreed to end Mr. Cordier's employment with the town of Foxborough.
Oh, shit.
The town would like to thank Mr. Cordier for the service to the town. All right, having said that, we'll open it up to citizens' input. Anybody here for citizens' input? Anyone online?
For citizens' input.
Okay.
Can we just mention that we're having some board doc issues tonight, too?
Yes.
So bear with us, just in case we seem a little...
We seem a little slow. Our computer program is malfunctioning, so believe it or not, we're going to have to go old-school and with paper, so bear with us a little bit. All right, next up on the agenda is a one-day wine and beer license Wormtown Brewery for Patriot Place Dog in the Bog Event. So...
They are online.
They are online. All three of you?
Just Kim Galinsky.
Oh, okay. Kimberly, that's Kimberly. How you doing, Kimberly?
Hello, how are you?
We're doing well, thank you. So tell us a little bit about the Dog in the Bog Event coming up.
Sure. Last year, we were invited to do an event with Bass Pro over in the Cranberry Bog. Great spot, customers loved it, and they invited us back again this year, but we're going to do something, we're hoping to get our license, to do four different dates, 7:20, which happens to be Thursday, 8:03, 8:17, and 8:31. And these events we would set up, we would offer full pours, so 16-ounce pours. My staff would be there, they're all TIP certified, and they would be checking IDs and making sure customers are consuming appropriately. We would hope to set up at 3:00, and the event would run from 4:00 to 7:00. We're looking to just spread a little bit of awareness about where the brewery is right inside of Patriot Place, but also work with our partners and build that partnership that we have with Bass Pro already, make it a little bit stronger. So it's really just a kind of like a customer appreciation event. Bass Pro is going to put on a bunch of different activations, so they're going to do some maybe tie-flying, maybe have some casting classes, some outdoor, you know, outdoor sportsmen and women type events, and we would just be added to that as a feature.
Just a quick question. Sadly, we can't open up your application. Where will the event be at Bass Pro?
Do you know where the Cranberry Bog is, down behind Bass Pro?
Around behind.
Yep, it would be right down back there.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
No. So we had you come in front of us strictly because this is, even though you have an alcohol license, beer pour license, this is the first time you were doing this event. You've already hit the buzz points that we normally would ask, which is, is everybody TIP certified? And so you were way ahead of us on that, so we appreciate you taking the time and making the presentation. If everyone's comfortable.
Motion to approve the application for four one-day beer and wine licenses for July 20th, August 3rd, August 17th, August 31st, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at One Bass Pro Drive for Patriot Place Dog in the Bog Event hosted by Wormtown Brewery. The license shall include the 24-hour period immediately before and after the event in order to allow for properly, proper delivery and disposal of all alcoholic beverages prior to and immediately following the event.
Second. Any further discussion?
Just under further discussion, that is something different than we have done in the past, but in looking at the ABBCC regulations, they had suggested that it include the day before and day after, so just for this board, that's just something new that we haven't seen before.
Good point. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Posed, none? Great, looking forward to going down and taking a peek.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too, good night.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, no.
Nope, I got one.
I have extras if anybody needs them.
There you go. All right. Okay, 7:10, running a tad early. One-day all-alcohol license and one-day entertainment license for the Travis Mannion Foundation. And who's going to be talking about that other than Deputy Chief?
Shelby Han and Krista Foy.
Okay. Welcome. Please tell us about the event, and we've got Deputy Chief Noonan here, too, to back you up. And yeah, introduce yourselves and what the organization is, and tell us a little bit about it.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to join tonight. My name is Shelby Han, and I am the Special Events Manager for Travis Mannion Foundation. I'm also joined by Krista Foy, who is the Senior Director of Special Events and has been with Travis Mannion since the start of the organization. I'd love to tell you a little bit about who we are and our annual event surrounding the Army-Navy game. We are a national veteran service organization. We're led and empowered by veterans and families of the fallen. Our foundation's namesake, First Lieutenant Travis Mannion, was a Marine and Naval Academy graduate who was killed in Iraq in 2007. Travis and his fellow Marines were ambushed during a patrol, and while leading their counterattack, Travis had made the ultimate sacrifice that day to draw fire away from his wounded teammates. His actions that day allowed every member of his patrol to return home safely to their families. But before Travis's final deployment, his brother-in-law had asked him why he needed to go back to Iraq, why not let someone else take his place, and his response was, if not me, then who? And that is the mantra that our organization lives by. Today, it's a constant reminder for all of us to live with character and put the interests of others before our own, most importantly, to further our mission of creating a nation of purpose-driven individuals to develop character in future generations. And above all else, we are a community, and our annual tailgate surrounding the Army-Navy game is exactly that, a community coming together to celebrate and honor our nation's heroes and also raise funds to support our organization. This is a family event we've successfully been hosting for about the past five years. We are dedicated to the safety of our attendees. We have several protocols in place, not only for event security, but also to ensure we're following any rules and regulations we do need to adhere by. This is a ticketed event, and every part of, we have the entire lot space for this event at the Rodman Ford Lot, so you will need to have a ticket to enter the premises. For those who are 21-plus, when they do register for the event, they will have to sign a waiver, agree that they are 21-years of age or older if they are getting a 21-plus ticket, and they will have to have a valid form of identification to receive a 21-plus wristband to enter the tailgate. And those who are under 21 will also have identifiers that they are not of age. We have a large security team of volunteers that consists of a group of 10 to 20 men and women who are mainly made up of retired and off-duty law enforcement agents. And all of our alcohol is served by TIP-certified bartenders. We are looking to host our tailgate from 10:30 to about 2:30 p.m., in which point we'll also have a viewing party, so the event itself will go until about 6:30 p.m. with alcohol being not stopped being served around halftime.
Awesome. You want to talk a little bit about...
I do, just because of the nature of the event, the Army-Navy game, the organization taking over the Rodman Lot, I had an in-depth conversation with Ms. Han, it was a great conversation, they have a great history, they've been at six other Army-Navy games in Philadelphia, so they do have a successful event. I asked if they've had any violations in any of the events that they've had, and she's had, to the best of their knowledge, no violations. Everywhere where they go to get a license, they're able to reapply, obviously, Philadelphia six times. Obviously, we had in-depth conversations of responsible alcohol service, the expectations of the town of Foxborough and the Foxborough Police Department, and she was very receptive to all my suggestions and ideas. They're going to have a robust security team there, making sure that they're checking identifications and having wristbands for those that are over 21, and not only are they going to do that, they're going to have wristbands for those that are under 21, obviously two different colors. She understands the importance of having, of hiring and obtaining TIP-certified servers as well as those that will be checking IDs, will be well-versed in that. Because of the location and the crowd size, we had a discussion, we're going to have police-uniformed detail officers there as well to provide an extra level of security for them in a presence. Very impressed with their organization, very honorable organization, and I think they'll be a very successful event. We've had different conversations about the type of event they're going to have, and she's working with Katie Lang to make sure that they get all the required permits for food trucks and stages and everything else, so I think it'll be a great event for the Army-Navy game in the town of Foxborough.
Great, thank you. Katie, do you want to add anything?
No, I just really want to say thank you to Shelby. She basically did all the work for me and outlined exactly what they need from what department, so I'll be reaching out to Scott and Matt, and they'll kind of lead their departments and what they need to make sure that their event is successful.
And Krista, I want to give you a chance to speak if you want to, or decline if Shelby did all the talking.
I'm happy to talk. Any chance you give me, I'm happy to talk. So I won't take a lot of time, but I just want to say, kind of echo what Shelby said, and, you know, thank you all for giving us the opportunity to join tonight. As you mentioned, I have been with the Travis Mannion Foundation for 16 years, and so the Army-Navy tailgate that we have hosted in Philadelphia, and then one time up in, at MetLife Stadium when the game was in New York. We've had tremendous success with it, and like Shelby said, you know, it is a family event, there's lots of different things. I think it'll be a really great opportunity for some local businesses to come out and support what we're doing and be a part of it as well. So just again, want to say thank you and looking forward to the game, and go Navy.
Any questions from the board?
No, all the paperwork is in compliance and very complete, so...
No, I was just going to say, I love the idea of everybody with a band, you know, because normally that's where you're looking for a band, but now it's like, okay, it's going to be very clear if someone's looking across and they see somebody with the wrong color band, something in, you know, so I had never heard of that before. I think that that's a great way to hold an event like this and to stay, make sure you're serving just over people over 21, so...
It's a family event, we had the discussion today, it's a family event, so obviously the different age groups, obviously, they get a good program in place.
Was that something that you suggested, Richie, or is that something that they normally do?
They have a system in place, and we worked it out where it's going to be two different colored wristbands, obviously because of the weather, they had a stamped system in place, but the wristbands worked best, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea, might be something that we see for other events here. I think that's a super idea.
Thank you, and I'll also note, you know, any reentry into our tailgate, if you do, if you are over 21, you will have to provide your ID again to reenter, because I know sometimes that can be a concern for reentry as well.
Anybody else?
Thank you for your due diligence with this one, I know it's a different one, so appreciate it.
Yeah, I want them to be having a great event, it's a great organization.
Sounds like it. Okay.
All right, I have two motions for this one, so we'll take the first one and then the second one, so, or is it the next one, sorry?
No, you're correct.
Should be entertainment.
Okay, so it is two, yeah, okay, sorry. All right, so motion to approve the application for a one-day all-alcohol license for the Travis Mannion Foundation on December 9th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. at 45 Washington Street. The license shall include the 24-hour period immediately before and after the event in order to allow for the proper delivery and disposal of all alcoholic beverages prior to and immediately following the event.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Posed? Great, congratulations.
One more. All right, motion to approve the one-day entertainment license for the Travis Mannion Foundation on December 9th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. at 45 Washington Street.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Awesome.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to Foxborough.
Yeah, we're excited, thank you, please join us.
Right, remember it's Foxborough, not Boston.
Oh, we know, we've already been up there, we're well aware. Thank you so much, have a good night.
Good night, too.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is Personnel Board Proposal. We'll have Chief Grace, yeah, might come up, too, Chief Keller. So this is a proposal both chiefs discussed with the Personnel Board, and now they're bringing it in front of us. Why don't you explain what it was?
Did you guys receive the memo?
Yes, from Gary Whitehouse.
No, mine.
Yours, yeah, yours is in the packet.
Okay.
Although people may not have access to it right now.
Try refreshing, I think that I tried to...
I got in.
Oh.
I got in, I...
Yeah.
I don't know, but I went from search bar to board docs, and then instead of like what's bookmarked, and then went to the login page from the search, and then I went into the public site, I didn't authenticate, and I seemed to get in okay.
No idea what you just said.
Let me see it, I know. In the back, you just log in, but we're listening, okay?
Yeah, I did that, too. Okay.
So there's two matters before the board here tonight, both of them, the Personnel Board has weighed in on and support both of them. The first one is this processing or adjusting the deputy police chief position grade 11 and also the assistant fire chief who fall into that position. That position dates back to probably 2012, when any of the adjustments on their personal wage were made, and those were to the lieutenant positions only, and that was after a wage study that was done for the police union. At the time, the position was unfilled by both police and fire, and it just sat vacant all the way till 2019. The separation between that position and the lieutenants, it's about 5.7%. I don't, it wasn't intentional to be that low, it just had never been filled. So my proposal is to at least make the separation between the ranks slightly comparable between all the other ranks with the police and fire, and the total separation between the lieutenant and the deputy chief would move up to 13% total separation. Obviously, when doing this, we had to look at where we stand with other departments and the comps that were gathered clearly identify that we are below that substantially, even at the 50 percentile, so moving that separation, it closes the gap and makes sure that we're staying competitive for our number twos, both for police and fire. That's a very brief historical view on that position.
Yeah, you brought this in front of the Personnel Board, we do have a letter from the chair, Gary Whitehouse, also in favor of, you know, the change and the discrepancy. Any questions from the board?
No, it's really laid out well in your memo.
Okay.
Exactly.
And I watched, you can watch the Personnel Board if you didn't have a chance to catch it, too, for more.
Part two would be the police...
Shall we keep them separate?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, I think we should keep them separate for just simplicity's sake.
Okay, so the step 11 first?
Yeah.
All right, so motion to approve the increase of grade 11 steps on the non-union pay scale effective July 1st, 2023.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? I have one thing.
Would that be 2020, oh, I'm sorry, FY 23, 24?
23, 24.
I got you, okay.
And any, any of the increases is just going to be part of the budget?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All right.
Part two is the police executive assistant under the, under my direct supervision. The employee personally in that position has been with the department since 1998, and has, the list in the memo about all of the duties that are performed were never part of the position by the previous person who held it, didn't work with accreditation, didn't do the billing for all the details, didn't collect the details, and didn't even do the license-to-carry administrative work. So this particular position is a grade five, the request is just to move it to a grade six. Number one is when you have key personnel, and after we just went through six months, seven months of strategic planning, identifying your key players in your agency, and making sure you're addressing retainability, this clearly stood out as something that should be addressed, and it's only fair.
Any, the board?
Just again, it can be absorbed within the budget.
Absolutely, yes.
Like Doc asked in the last one.
Okay.
All right, sorry, oh, sorry, I'm multitasking here. Okay, motion to approve the change of grade for the police chief administrative assistant from a grade five to a grade six on the non-union pay scale effective July 1, 2023.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, great.
You're free, I'm good, I guess.
You're free, he's going to stay.
You can stay, you can stay.
Moral support?
Paige, do you have to move over to this seat?
No, we tackled that earlier. So moving right along, the stadium and satellite parking study discussion, this is just a discussion to get things rolling and the community aware of some of the issues that are going on up there, so, once again...
Do you want to start?
Go ahead.
So recently, we've received several new applications for satellite parking. These are new and beyond the current licensed satellite lots, so there are three elements to why the town would issue a permit. There exists a public demand for the commercial parking is one, the commercial parking lot is necessary to protect the public convenience or welfare, and that was number two, and number three is the commercial parking lot, which will be utilized for stadium events, is necessary to assure an adequate number of parking spaces for stadium events. Well, I believe we've come to a point where do we need additional satellite parking? Currently, the change in the business model by the Kraft Group, they have indicated that even without our current satellite lots, they have adequate parking. I am in no ways suggesting that we eliminate our current satellite lots, just make sure I'm very clear on that, but I believe that the town has to decide whether or not we continue to issue permits to satellite lots that are outside of the scope of the traffic management plan, and then all have to be managed, and then when we issue them a permit, they have an expectation of services that are delivered both from the police and fire on these events. So I am not a parking engineer. I could give you my opinion, but I think at the end of the day, the town is going to need an expert to do a study and present it to the board so they can make a decision on what direction they would like to proceed, and that sort.
Yes, so this has come up, and the reason we feel strongly that we don't want to just kick this to you is we've had a couple lots that would require special permits from the planning board, and special permits from the planning board can be costly, you know, it can cost well over $1,000 or more to apply and be reviewed, so we would hate to be in a position where the planning board, which has different criteria than your clearly outlined criteria in your parking regulations, we could easily approve these, and then next thing you know, it's in front of you, and your hands are kind of tied because they've gone through this whole effort, and now they're in front of you, and you're looking going, but do we need it? And then that's sort of how this came about, is I contacted Chief Grace and said, are we all set with parking, do we need it? And he said, I can't really answer that question, we don't know, the stadium has indicated they have sufficient parking, we, you know, we don't, not believe them, but we've never as a town studied this ourselves and made sure and verified. I have been in touch with the Kraft Group, they are willing to work with us and give us data and parking information if this study moves forward, and we think at this point in time, it's a good idea to really evaluate where things stand and are more lots needed? If they are, we'll deal with it, and then, like Chief Grace said, we could also evaluate sort of the effect on traffic management. We have reached out, we have a traffic consultant on sort of, not retainer, on call, shall we say, that's already been through procurement, they worked with us on the Walnut Street Signal Project, we have a good working relationship with them. I reached out to them and came up with a scope that's included in your memo, and it is, you know, we could tweak it as we look at it, but generally speaking, it's something they've not seen before, I mean, not many communities around here have stadiums to deal with this, so we're recommending that we do this study. Then the next question is, how do we pay for it? And one option was free cash, the problem with that is it would take several months to have the free cash certified and appropriated and whatnot, and by then, we could lose a whole year, or at least six months to a year, so we went to Marie, our problem solver, and we realized that we have this economic development fund, and as you may or may not know, we collect $5,000 per liquor license. There's no real clear charge on that fund, and it's just something that we haven't used, really, I don't think, since the fire station project, when we use...
Wayfinding, too, do we use a little of that?
Hmm?
Do we use some for wayfinding?
No.
No?
No, wayfinding's all been through donation. So right now, the budget, or the amount held in that account is $69,242.55. We feel that this has been funded, many of the businesses are out at Patriot Place and the stadium area, and so therefore, it's kind of, there's a nexus there. Also, Marie's brought to our attention that since there was never a town meeting vote, and there isn't, I'm going to manhandle this, but there isn't a clear outline of being allowed to collect these funds, you can collect them, but you can't necessarily keep them in a revolving account the way we are, so Marie's concern is that the auditor or the DOR is going to probably make us close it at a certain point in time, and not to say we can't collect the funds, but we would need to probably put them in the general fund and then appropriate them appropriately, shall we say? So with all those, we came up with the idea that this would be a good fund to use, it would draw down that account, thereby eliminating it, and then we could do it the proper way under the DOR requirements, and all the while, looking at the community and the need for parking, and really doing an independent analysis on this. So we are recommending that you allow this to be approved and that you designate this fund to be used for it, it would be not to exceed $60,000. We will work to get that number down, but that was, you know, the sort of the scope and their estimate, and subject to, we would, Chris and I will negotiate that together.
All right, any questions?
What do we do with the other $9,000 that's in the fund? Buy some benches or something, like?
Come on up, Marie, come on up, just microphone.
Do we have to spend the other $9,000 and figure out some stuff maybe uptown, or?
Yeah, you can do that, otherwise, it would just close out to the general fund.
Okay.
What you can do going forward is, because you will be collecting that 5,000 year after year for all of these licenses, what you can do is let it go to the general fund and then create an appropriation on the budget side, either under the selectment or select board budget or planning budget for these kinds of studies and surveys, things like that.
Yeah, I mean, the money, although we haven't used it, I think we've had a lot of ideas and things that we wanted to use it for, like benches, or, you know, back before we had the paving, or, you know...
Marketing.
Crosswalk signs, marketing, so I like that we're spending this, but I would like to kind of keep that $9,000?
It will stay there.
Okay, so we can kind of roll that over into the new revolving fund to give us like a little bit to start with?
We're just essentially using it before we're told to close it out.
Okay.
We can probably keep it in there for the time being until someone notices it, it's just that with, I think we're getting a new audit firm, and so it's very likely that whether the DOR comes in first or the audit firm, it will have to expire, but for right now, I think we can keep it in.
Yeah, we'll stay there.
Yeah, we'll keep it in.
So this work doesn't have to be bid because of the special expertise of people involved?
We already did a bid, so we have a list of engineering firms that are on call, so we did an RFP, and we have, we could choose to work with any of those vendors, and won't have to do a separate bid.
All right, I guess the question I have is, I know there's a lot that goes into it, but is there, so do we know how many parking spaces that there are, what the crafts have with the satellite, I mean, obviously, the satellite lots have to apply for a license, I believe, I might, could be wrong, but do the post price they pay based on how many spots?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, and I'm not opposed to spending the money, I'm more like, like... I'm more like, like, Lee, you mentioned some stuff, and I know the money's been sitting for a while, but, you know, is this as as simple just to find out if there's enough spots? I know there's, the traffic is different, and and there's a lot that goes into what goes on up there, but is there a way to say, okay, there are 7,000 spots total? And, you know, based on what's licensed to park? You know, because I know the new, you know, there are people in Walpole that are parking too and stuff, which I know we don't get, and we don't have any say in what they do over there, right, that's based on over there. But do do we know that, you know, and I don't even know what the equation is, you know, for an event? Most most of the time, it's not one person in a car. There are some cars that have 10 people, and there are some cars that have two people in it. But is there a way to, before we get into spending the money, is there a way to even know that we're roughly what we need? You know, I know you're not an engineer, I'm not, but.
So I think we've all had that conversation, what you just brought up.
Yeah.
We just had, we just had a largest event at Gillette, as you noticed. We packed all the cars. But this survey will do more than just tell us the spots. It's gonna tell us what the town has, locations, mapping, where the people are going. Many of these satellite lots that people are applying for, they've never been thrown into the sidewalk with, whether we're talking, and whether or not that can handle the flow, and really starting to develop a headcount of what's coming out of these satellite lots that are being injected in the pedestrian vehicle safety. There's there's so much data that could be collected from this study that we, it'll be something as a foundation that will move using forward, especially with World Cup coming.
And and one of the things in our policy that we are supposed to take into account when approving a new lot is, is there a need for it? So, you know, there's so many different factors. It could be convenience, it could be, you know, it'll look at all those for us, I think, to really do the job and answer the question, is there a need for it? I mean, you could argue probably one way or another, no matter which way you look at it, but this will have some real engineers look at, is there a need for additional beyond now?
Yeah, Stephanie, it is beyond, so we could easily compile the raw numbers. You know, we know how many spaces there are.
Yeah.
Out at the stadium and all the lots, that's the easy part. It's really looking at the flows and the demand, and like Chief said, you know, the sort of what numbers we're seeing, how it's operating. You know, we're dealing with a lot more pedestrians across the street now than we ever were, and sort of really looking at the overall flow and safety and get and evaluating the traffic management. I believe you said that the the satellite lots have never been factored into the traffic management plan, correct? So we're, you know, they're adjusting every single time, they have to adjust their whole plan based on that. So now we'd be giving, you know, maybe there will be a need, but where is the right location? Is it, you know, over here, is it over here? Is that kind of the analysis we're anticipating?
So so it's really not just about number of spots.
I guess that was kind of my question.
It's like a comprehensive parking study that we need.
Yeah. Okay.
Where are the license requests coming from?
I think.
There's one over off Lincoln Road, and then there's one on Route 1. So.
Where's Lincoln Road?
Old Rodman, like the gym back in our day.
What's the risk of too many spots? I mean, we're.
Well, Chief, I think you're you're dealing with, you have to accommodate everyone.
So think about Route 1, if every business owner decides that they're just gonna apply for a permit, and there's no guidelines from this board. I'm not an attorney, but as soon as you say no to someone, they're gonna say, why? Okay, you're talking to me, why am I different than everybody else? That's just a general comment. But as maybe we see traffic delays, maybe we, and people want to start moving away and moving away, if the infrastructure has never supported this many people parked this far from Gillette, how are we gonna get them there safely on a six-foot sidewalk if we keep pushing more and more people away? That's just one factor. I mean, too many spots, it's probably not an issue, but you have people who who own property, they may be trying to sell their property, they may be using this as, hey, you could also get a parking permit from the town, it's worth more money. I think we just really need to lock it down and know what we have, and we need to control it and manage it. Unlimited parking is no control on the town's perspective. And then when we issue the permit, from the town, I can tell you, they're gonna come to me and go, you issued a permit, you have to provide safe egress for all my patrons inside and outside, and you have to staff the lot. That just becomes unmanageable, depending how far away they are from the event, and providing those services for police and fire, potentially.
Well, you provide those services now, right?
We do, yes.
Right.
Yes.
And what's the offset to the town for providing those services to these licensed lots?
Well, we're working with our our partners with the state police who are helping us because we're not, we can't even get there.
No, but I mean, in terms of the the licensees, do they pay, you know, is there enough of a license fee to offset some of these expenses or?
We could mandate a police detail for that one lot, but I can tell you, if you have a lot with 600 cars, one police officer's really not gonna be able to impact a situation or really, it's gonna require mutual aid and other resources. So when you look at the Mass Highway Traffic Management Plan, it doesn't have designations in there for all these satellite lots to interfere with the contra lane flow for crossovers. We've got it down to a science with all our current lots, but I couldn't imagine just expanding and expanding and how we're gonna get there. We could end up with, you know, Jersey barriers potentially coming up and down Route 1 from Rentham 495, just, it's just so big and so dynamic. I think we have to at least start somewhere and have a foundation to build off of.
So Chief, so when someone pays their permit fee, that includes the services that your department or the fire department has to provide for them? So it's not, it's, there's not another fee, or or you would say, you would say, no, you're gonna, you're gonna need a detail here, and they will pay for that above what they've already paid? So is that what you say, like the?
Yes.
The impact?
They they could.
Yeah.
Like, I could, I could mandate it if I could get someone to work it.
Yeah. But in the, yeah, but in the big picture.
That's another issue.
In the big picture, this is really gonna be a big safety net for you, like you said. So if you feel it's adequate, and the study will tell you that, the more people coming forward, if you want to turn somebody down, you're gonna say, well, the study has said we have enough parking, we have a safe way, and that's a protection.
It's actually you.
So can I, can I read this real quick? So this is the part from our own regulation, section three. Before granting a commercial parking license, the Board of Selectmen may find the following. The number one, there exists a public demand for a commercial parking lot. And we really haven't seen too many, like I can think of two, one got approved, one didn't, in in my last five, five years. But, you know, we're really kind of throwing a dart. We don't know if there's, if there's a, if there's a public demand for the additional lots.
There's actually a third, I just realized, up by Chase Lumber, that there.
That's another third, third new one.
That's a third one who's put an application in.
Or acquired. We haven't, we haven't, we've kind of kept them, we've, we've sort of been saying, we're not sure we can justify, we've been touting that section three and kind of held folks off because we just, I don't want them to come to the planning board, spend all that money, and then come to you, and you guys are standing there saying, now what do we do? We really can't deny them. And Chief is, you know, we've been working on this for a couple months now.
Once we say yes, how do you say no?
It kind of stifles the economic development too, I think, in the area a little bit, where like, you know, if they're parking cars, it's like, it kind of remains like a ghost town a little bit up there. I mean, I don't know if the study will look into that, but even a little piece of that may be really interesting, I think, from my perspective on the board as well.
And you alluded to a little earlier, too, you know, this report, the survey's gonna be important going forward with with World Cup. And I remember you telling me just a couple of weeks ago, World Cup's like eight Super Bowls? Am I correcting and quoting you correctly?
That you are, and that's, and that's the way it's being presented with a variety of different challenges with, through signage, transportation, public transportation, initiatives from the Department of Transportation, mandates from FIFA. Having a stronghold or a base of knowledge of what our landscape looks like is gonna be key.
It'd be huge, yeah.
I mean, you have people thinking about renting out their houses. Imagine what some of the lots are thinking right now, thinking two, three years from now, and they, you know, you have six applicants come before you and ask for a parking permit. I I don't know if you could answer the question for them right now.
What does a parking permit cost?
Katie, do you know that?
I do. It's $7 per spot. That's owed to the town on an annual basis, and then they also will pay a state fee, and that's a calculation that is $400,000 divided by the number of spots between Foxborough and Walpole. And last year, it fell around about $23 per spot.
But that's also after the application fee, correct? Which is $1,000?
Well, that's for a special permit, so I don't know what the license fee is. Katie, do you charge if they come in for a license? Is there even a fee?
No, it's just that $7 per spot, which I guess would be the fee. And that is just per.
That's paid annually, correct? The $7 is annually?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you have a question too, Seth?
Yes, so I, question or thought? So I understand the desire to limit the supply of spots. What does an average spot cost to go to a Patriots game now? What do people pay?
Zero.
Or $50.
It's in their ticket.
Okay.
Depends on Taylor Swift, wasn't it up to like $80 at Taylor Swift?
All right. So I mean, that's, I don't know if that's reasonable or not, but I agree that, you know, safety first, in terms of maintaining the safety of the of the people parking, and then beyond that, something within a radius from the stadium makes sense. Spending 50, $60,000 to to find out if, you know, we need more spaces, I don't know if that's it.
But I think it's more than just needing more spaces, and I don't think it's limiting spaces. I think it's information we're gathering.
Yeah, so there's, we can spend $60,000 to gather information, or you can, if you can safely park cars at new satellite lots, and that's information too. If nobody parks there, then it means we don't need them anymore, and they close up and do something else.
Chief, do you know, this may be a question for somebody up at Patriot Place, but have they, is the, what's going forward really gonna be like, you buy a ticket and there's, there's a parking fee on a, on a ticket? Someone, someone told me that they were, they were gonna start including even for football, and I said, geez, you know, I got, you know, my, my invoice, I didn't.
They're already doing it, they're already including parking in the tickets.
For everything?
Yeah, I think the concert, Taylor Swift was the first one, so all the presentations I've seen, it's included going forward if you park on one of their spots. Obviously, if you park somewhere else.
So so if you're requesting to park on a spot there, they add it on?
Yeah.
There's no additional cost?
It's built into all their tickets, so everyone.
But but I will caveat that, that's the other side of Route 1. If you want a premium pay for the stadium side of Route 1, if you are a ticket holder, this is again, just based on my personal experience, if I bought a ticket to Taylor Swift and I got the opportunity to purchase a stadium side parking pass, anyone can park non-stadium side on the other side of Route 1 for free. So there is a little bit of a balance, from what I understand, how the concerts worked, and from how the concerts work, will be how the the football games work.
Okay. So it's, so it's per ticket, if if you're going in with six people in a car, all six people have paid.
They've already paid.
Something towards, and if you're going with two people, so if you're going with two, you get a deal.
But if you, if you.
It's all one price.
If you drive 10 cars there, and you have a group of 10 people, and you park on the other side, it doesn't matter how many cars you take for free.
One price if you buy whatever number of tickets you purchase. If I, if I order four tickets, it's one price, one, one is added on.
And it includes parking, so if you, if you walk there and don't park, you've already paid for a parking spot.
Okay. All right.
But if you buy a parking pass for stadium, that's one car?
Yep.
On the, on the stadium side.
On the stadium side. So that's probably why you're seeing it in your, in your season ticket holder invoice, because that's stadium side. You could choose to not do that and park on the other side for free.
Yeah, well, not this year, because they're offering free parking, free parking, there's no, there's no parking this year. No parking fee. Our tickets went up, the cost of the tickets went up, but the parking was free.
That includes.
That includes.
Part of the parking.
You're paying for it in your ticket.
Oh, I, the letters, we're getting above what we have to talk about, but it did say it was free, the parking was free this year.
They, you know, they could have a promotion.
No free lunch.
Well, next year, it's gonna be $400 more.
Has this model changed? They've, they've grown enough since 1971 to say that they can park enough cars on their property.
I I was just trying to get to a simple question here, but I, safety is obviously an issue and extremely important, but revenue comes in, I'm looking at about $220,000 of revenue comes in, you know, for these lots. The town incurs expenses, really, I don't know what they are. I know there's a permitting fee. You know, when you're looking at doing the study, does that, does that all make sense in terms of, you know, the offsets here to the town and the revenue coming in?
I think that's a question for the board.
Yeah, and remember, this will, this will stay, because it's not about the existing lots, like that 219, 800, you know, that that you're looking at? That will stay, from what I understand, this is just looking at the need for the new lots.
Right, right.
So I don't, I wouldn't anticipate a parking study would do a cost analysis for us.
Why wouldn't we ask for that?
Well, we would, it would just be a different, I would think it would be a different subject matter expert, like our traffic consultant probably wouldn't be able to do that, that would be more of a financial analysis, and it would cost more.
Yeah, like a traffic engineer wouldn't tell you if you're charging the right amount for a parking spot, I wouldn't think.
And one other part of our memo was that we are recommending that if you do choose to go this route, we would recommend the board put a pause on future parking approvals while this gets worked out.
You know, and I would.
To run, to avoid a rush, you know, what if everybody rushes in and wants to get, I mean, we don't know how many more there are out there, but again, to Chief's point, it could, it's a valuable commodity up there, and it does suppress development. I mean, if you can make so much money on parking, then why develop your land? I mean, we see that up there, so there is an economic development impact to the parking.
And some of this does seem like a cost we're incurring because of, you know, Army Navy or whatever, so I don't know if there's an opportunity to kind of cost share it, I know we can cover it, but I think we should, you know, look at, you know, does it make sense to share pieces of this if that data is going to, you know, go into private business models or whatever too, so.
And we, and it's, and it's fine, we can, we can suspend issuing any more licenses, if that'll be part of our motion for, so no one's gonna come to us and say, well, you know, we want to apply, you have to. So we can do that till we get the information.
Well, we think so, because of, again, that criteria that where you have to have a need, and right now, on paper, it doesn't really look like there's a need. So I think the board could say, you know, until we determine if there is a need right now, you know, and we would try not to accept any, we don't wanna incur costs for them, you know, I don't want them to come to the planning board and spend $1,000 and then hit a dead end here. So we would discourage, as we have been, their application and let them know we're working on getting them an answer.
Indefinitely suspended?
Well, until the, the study's done.
Until the study's done.
Could take up to six months.
Katie's raising her hand.
Go ahead, Katie.
Dennis, you did bring up a good question. I'd actually reached out to Ms. Kelly, who is basically the me in Walpole, and I had asked what Walpole charges for each spot. She also said $7. And I said, oh, is that, you know, in your town, or is it just what we do? And she said, she would look through her minutes to see if she could see anything, but she said it also could have been a case that Walpole saw what Foxborough was doing, and they just went with the same. So I think she was also gonna bring to her board, maybe there is some type of, you know, communication between Walpole and Foxborough on raising that per spot. I can try to find out what year it started at $7 and maybe a possible why. And then maybe when there's a free time or a good meeting, you know, we could discuss it from there. But I know that's, you know, one thing I talked about with Ms. Kelly and Walpole as well.
Did we adjust it when we adjust our licensing fees recently? The cost per space?
We did not.
We didn't do that one? But I remember asking, like, what does Walpole do? We talked about that, okay.
Well, it makes sense because back, back in the day, people were probably paying 20, 25, $30. And now if they're paying 50 or 60, they're, they're making more money. If we feel that, you know, we go from $7 to $9 or something like that, we might be justified. I mean, that's probably down the road.
And I think that's for the year, right? Katie, they don't pay the $7 per event.
Yeah.
So there's quite a.
Yes, you're right, for the entire year. And then I remember during COVID, you know, it was, you know, some of the licensees were saying, oh, well, you know, we're not having any events. And I'll never forget what Bill Keegan said. He said, yeah, he's like, you're right, but, you know, we never asked you for extra money when the Patriots were booming and, you know, there were, you know, so many events and so many playoff games. So I kind of, I think they kind of saw what I was saying after I used Bill's line.
Yeah, you can't have it both ways, right?
Accept the motion?
All right, motion to approve up to $60,000 for the Economic Development Fund for a stadium and satellite parking study.
Second.
Should we, should we include the caveat or have it as a second motion?
With the caveat to.
Pause.
Pause, new applications until the study is complete or the board decides otherwise.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, right back on time.
Can I just ask one question?
Oh, absolutely.
Do you have a couple of action items for the, the season? Are you all set? Those have all been vetted and were for the NFL season and additional concerts.
I think some extended hours.
Yes, some extended hours, but they've all been vetted and.
Yeah, the only one.
The craft data sheets.
Yes.
13.1, the craft data sheets with the New England Patriots 2023 season, the second Luke Combs concert, the premiere lacrosse league quarterfinals and a KRLG concert. So those are new items that are being added to the existing entertainment license.
But you knew about all of them.
Yes, absolutely.
I had one unrelated question, and that's the VFW applied to open early. And has there been any issues there, given when they were in front of us recently?
Can I come back and have a discussion? I just may not have. We have had no incidents down there whatsoever. But I would want to do all my research, just.
So I hear one of the questions I had on the VFW is, I think, a lot of these open early coupled with you have to serve food.
Correct.
I didn't see that in their application.
They have to.
Is that understood or?
Well, they said they'd be serving hot dogs and their usual fare.
There should be a menu in there. I know Katie had spoken with them that they're going to have their typical hot dogs and chips. And some of those days are going to be 1:00 PM because they normally open at 3:00 PM.
Right, but it wasn't like in the other ones, it's a specific requirement that you have to have food in order to get the alcohol.
Yeah, I think that's a liquor regulation.
They do.
And it's in there, it's in the thing.
Hot dogs, pizza and packaged snacks.
Yep.
Yep.
But it doesn't say you have to have the food. The other ones say.
But that will be included in the letter. It will say.
All right. I think Davio's.
The extended request would be approved with a menu available.
Dennis, are you saying that when folks order drinks, they also have to order food? Is that more the caveat as opposed to just food is available?
That's not the rule, though. Like I could go to Davio's on a Sunday and sit down at the bar and just have a drink. You don't have to order food with it.
I'm saying the 10 to 12, 10 to 12 period.
I don't understand that to be the regulation.
No, that was, my understanding that's for alcohol to go.
Right, to go, I agree.
To go, you have to order food with your alcohol to leave the premises.
But you don't have to order food.
No, the licensee has to offer it on the menu.
Right, but you can just go there and drink from 10 to 12.
You could.
I mean, the other ones, couple it specifically, that's why it jumped out at me. If you go through the different.
I don't know how I would enforce making sure they're eating their meals.
You want, you want to hear something? Way, way back in the day when I worked at the Endzone, they had to come in and purchase a ticket for brunch to be served. Now, nobody was policing whether they were actually eating, but they had to purchase, to have a drink, you had to purchase a ticket for brunch. Millie, that's 30 years ago.
Well, that was way before this regulation. That was money making.
Yeah.
All right, all right, no, I think we're good.
So Chief, they're going to approve it tonight, though, the VFW request.
That's fine, I'll make sure they're in compliance.
I mean, I will.
I can follow up with them.
Like the data sheet for 7/21, I do wish we got these things earlier. Like today's 7/18, so I'm saying it on the record. It's advertised and showing up in my Facebook feed, plenty earlier than that. I hope we can get these sooner in the future.
And maybe the board can reach out to the craft group on their plans on stuff like that and their timing.
I mean.
13.1.
Yeah, like Luke Combs, Luke Combs is, is Friday night and we're approving it right now.
No, absolutely, I totally agree with you.
And, and can I ask a question? I don't think Chief needs, it's with him, but the dates that the VFW is asking for, are they, are they holding functions, those dates? That has nothing to do with football.
I think it's Patriots. Patriots.
Just point this.
No, Stephanie's correct, there are other dates, they're holidays.
Okay.
Yeah, because like, I think the home opener is the 10th, isn't it? So they're asking for 9/4. I, I'm looking, I don't, you know, that was the first one I caught just because I knew when the opener was. But, so maybe we're singling out, but there's a reason why we're doing that at Patriot Place. The businesses are there. I don't really understand what a football game, the football game has to do with VFW. Maybe we'll talk about that when we get to the, the motion.
Let's wait till we get there.
I don't think, yeah, because that, you don't have anything you want to, I don't want to keep you. There isn't anything that you.
No, it's something you could hold back on, Katie may have.
That's who I asked while you were here, that's all.
Yeah.
If I could, while you're here, Skip Jacks, Patriot Place would like to request an extension of our liquor license on Sundays so that we would be able to serve alcohol at 10:00 AM. We will require that all patrons purchasing alcoholic beverages before 11:00 AM will be required to purchase food as well.
That might just be there.
Put that to the.
You also have the DORA, the.
I'm just looking for.
The outdoor dining regulation that the town authorized Patriot Place, which allows guests to go into a facility, into a restaurant, order food and a drink, and then leave the establishment in the DORA area to consume it. So that was mandated that they order food with that drink. So they may be adding that so that way they're covering themselves if their guest leaves the property. Which they may have, who is that for?
Skip Jacks.
The only two that didn't have the language was the VFW and Davios.
Okay.
All right, let's move on with the agenda, we'll come back to that. All right, thank you, Chief. All right, next item, 7/50, let me just.
ZBA.
Exited, yeah.
ZBA vacancy.
So there's a vacancy on the ZBA. And we're just here right now to discuss how, you know, it's our responsibility to fill that position. There's two qualified associate members that could be, could be appointed. Do you want to have them in front of us maybe in August and interview them? You know, I'm sort of leaving it up to you guys to see what you want to do. Both candidates, one was on the board a little bit longer than the other. There's been a policy that the one that's been on longer gets the appointment, but it's just a policy. It's not, you know, any bylaw or, you know, charter regulations, so.
We have asked them to submit one-page letters of explaining why they'd want to be on, be the full member. So if you don't, we do anticipate a pretty full agenda in August. So one other way of doing it is perhaps the letters. But it's really up to this board and to how to determine. Both are very qualified, both have longstanding tenures on the zoning board. So it's really going to be a tough decision.
Why would we make the decision?
It's our appointment.
It's our appointment.
No, I know, but I mean, in this particular instance, why, why can't they? Typically, they've gone with seniority. So now they're kicking it to us because they don't want to go as senior.
My guess would be they're both great candidates.
And it is our appointment.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, is it, is it, is it too late if we have them come before us the next meeting? Because then we wouldn't vote to another meeting, right?
Well, we could vote that night. We could vote that night. Because I think we can't probably leave it open that long and then we have to backfill the associate one. So are they okay? Waiting another month is my first question.
Yes.
I mean, I think at this point, if we've had them write letters and we didn't put on the agenda to appoint someone tonight, we have them come in and we make an appointment next time.
Well, that's what I was thinking, I just didn't know with Paige that they have a lot, you know, we don't want to hold them up.
No, they're fine, they're fine waiting.
Okay.
We got time.
All right, perfect.
He knows it probably wouldn't be till August anyway. So the question is, is them writing a letter enough or do you want them to come in front of us?
I mean, I've personally worked with both of them on a number of different boards. So a letter from me would be enough, but I don't know if the rest of the board has as much experience working with them on, you know, economic development or other boards like that.
So who are they?
Oh.
Kurt Egan and Lorraine Brew.
Thank you.
Just a quick thought, just the letter or you want them to come in front?
I'm fine with either. I know Lorraine better, but, so maybe that makes it less fair by just reading a letter, but I don't know.
Steph, letter or in front?
If a letter says everyone was okay with everybody, I'm fine. I don't know Kurt at all. I don't, it's not even really that I, I know Lorraine, but I don't, I've never served with her on a board. But I, I know who Lorraine is. So I mean, if you guys are okay with the letter, I can go either way, whatever. I know, is that a wishy-washy answer?
No, no, we're all saying that.
How many people are on this board?
Three.
Three.
It's three members, two associates.
I, I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
Okay, so just Leah.
I, I'm fine with the letter, but I, you know.
Let's do, let's put the letters.
Who's got the seniority? Just curious.
Kurt's been on, Kurt's been on longer.
Okay.
So let's get the letters. We don't have to have them come in front of us, we'll put the letters. We'll have them ahead of time so we could all read them. So maybe to come in here and make a decision after a discussion at the table. All right, sounds good.
And then we'll have to also open up to the public just to start getting that out there early to, obviously we have to backfill that associate member. So the public should start thinking about if anyone's interested in becoming an associate member.
Good, good plug. All right, 2024 Town Goals. We're, as part, Marie, you want to come up? As part of, correct me if I'm wrong, as part of your ending 2023, part of that, well, you explain it better than me.
So these goals are for the GFOA budget book that we're working on currently. These goals are essentially the last piece that we need to finish that off. And essentially, these goals are strategic goals, as GFOA likes to call them, or just townwide goals. And we figured that for the budget book, just to get it done, we can use what's been done in the past, tweak it a little bit. And then as far as the town manager goes, it's something that you all as a board can update further later on. But just for the budget book, for us to submit it by, I think it's August 7th or 8th. My recommendation is that we go with what we have, make some tweaks and then submit it.
So we had them in our packet, I don't know if anybody got a chance to take a look at them. But they're really kind of simple, it's just, it's just a way to get Marie to check off a box on her report, which I'm sure is very extensive. And it's, it's nothing we haven't seen in the past.
But, you know, my question was, obviously, we're in a time of transition right now. We can't, you know, ignore necessarily, I think, the position we're in, the elephant in the room, in the realm of transition. So these are kind of, you know, placeholder goals that I would think we would revisit, you know, later in the year. However, for the purposes of this book that we've been working on, you know, so hard, one of the requirements are goals, we do have goals. So we're able to roll those over and reevaluate them as appropriate at the necessary time.
And just to assure you that we are in transition, but we are continuing to work towards these goals. These are broad overarching goals that, you know, even with an acting, and, you know, we're going to continue to work on grants, we're going to continue to work on improving the financial way we do it, communication plan, we're not going to put a pin in that. So it is a challenging time, but we are still, we've got our eye on the prize and we're continuing to work towards these overarching goals. And they do provide some helpful insight, you know, for say me and Marie's being new, we know she's been running things for a while, not running, but working closely with George for a while. You know, we, we do think that these are good goals to include and they're, and they're valid. They're not just junk goals we're throwing in there as placeholders.
We just have to, I think, kind of address where we are right now and, you know, for us to put goals on right now, just have that discussion.
And Seth did submit some input and had some helpful things. We made a couple of changes to the goals that were originally sent out. For example, on the third line on the first page, we modified that to say, continue to provide support as warranted for progress towards achieving the GFOA.
Thank you.
We're doing that today, but we also assume we're going to do that every year. So that was a really good point to put it in there. The other thing we did talk about, we added in the newer one is the MBTA Communities Law. You know, we know that's coming up, that's something that we do have to work on, which as an aside, we got a $19,950 technical assistant grant yesterday to assist with that. I had said, you know, we're going to have to start looking at it in the fall. And so I submitted a request and we got that. So I'm not sure how we'll use it yet, maybe even some outreach and education because we think technically we can figure that out on our own internally. But maybe it's, it's how do we communicate it and what are we going to do? So we have updated that. Same with, we updated the, continue to collaborate with the MBTA and make permanent the pilot commuter rail service. Because the one, the goal that was on the books was pre-COVID. And I mean, the pilot had paused, but we're in the midst of that. And that's actually due to be evaluated in August. So, yeah, we, we did tweak this a bit and send out some good helpful comments on that.
So what, what we need is just an approval from the board for the next step for Maria.
So motion to approve fiscal year 2024 Town Goals.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to point out the importance of these goals and that it's, I understand that we want them ready for the book. But this is one of the really critical and important things that this board does on an annual basis. And I'm guilty of losing sight of them a little bit over the course of the last year. But I'm going to try to rectify that going forward. These goals, I think, are the strategy of the town. So we are in a transitional period, yet tailoring them towards whoever happens to be sitting in the chair of town manager, I think is, I think the focus should be on what the strategy is and we should really manage to these very closely in the coming year. So it's, these, these are, I think, pretty well-vetted. We're not just throwing them together to put into a book. So this is, this is what we're, this is sort of the true north for the town and for the town manager and what we should be aiming to achieve over the course of the next year and beyond. So I just wanted to add that.
No, I think it's a great point, they are well-vetted, but it's also a living document that's going to change.
And I think if we have a new town manager, that's when we'll be reevaluating these, that, you know, anyone would expect that when we have a new town manager, there'd be a discussion, they may have thoughts that require.
They're good goals, they're sufficiently broad, and they don't go into objectives. So you get the goals, they're sufficiently broad, I feel comfortable approving them. But then there's objectives that flow from the goals, so we don't want to get into the weeds on that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Was there one more?
Oh, let's see, oh, well, yeah, okay. So we got year-end transfers, which is sort of.
Want to flip it?
Rolling into.
Want to flip it?
Don't we approve these?
No.
No, so, so this is sort of with the open meeting law violation. So these two, 8.1 and 9.1 are sort of together. There was a, there was a open meeting, there was an open meeting law complaint about the fact that we did not vote on these transfers. And we brought it to town council, town council. It was the policy of this board for decades to just have the town manager mention that. And then he or her had the ability to make those transfers. Kind of to find out that's not necessarily true, that it is part of our bylaws that we do have to approve them. So we do have a letter going out explaining about the complaint, but also in retrospect, now we do have to approve them. And we read them last time, didn't we? Or should we read them again?
No, that, part of the complaint was that they weren't listed like we do with the commercial parking or the other licenses on the agenda.
Right, but they are listed now.
So they're listed for this agenda so that we can approve them.
Okay, do we have to go line by line again?
Just to prove that.
I don't think so because they're printed on the agenda section after section 14.1.
Was it, was it because I know, so advisory committee sees them first and they okay, they okay? Correct, Seth and Dennis? Is it, is it been that's what's happened in the past? Is it after they're approved there, then, then they came to this board?
Well, they came to the town manager and he just mentions to us. Well, they came to the town manager, and he just mentions to us.
Mentions that, that he.
He's going to make, approve the transfers.
I think the approval actually comes from advisory committee.
No, they don't, they only advise, they don't approve.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Okay, so.
So he, so they get presented to advisory, and then.
They actually are.
The town manager is the actual one who approves.
And, and just to clarify, I'm looking at the open meeting law complaint. The open meeting law complaint was that they were not listed on the agenda.
Okay.
So kind of two totally separate issues there.
But that brought to light the fact that there's actually a rule that this board should approve them, not the town manager. So that's, it's a twofold.
So that sort of opened up the next.
So we have to correct the open meeting law violation, which we've done by listing it on the agenda, but we also need this board to vote on those year-end transfers, which I believe the AdCom has already voted on.
Correct.
Is that what you were going to say, Christina, that the AdCom?
The AdCom does, so it's in general bylaw 20-4, that the AdCom does see it and vote on it, and then this board does it.
And they've already done so.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I thought. Because actually, bill presents them to advisory committee, and the advisory committee then looks at them and, and votes to approve them, approve or recommend. And then maybe, so it's going for a vote for maybe from both boards, maybe? Just this board wasn't actually voting to approve?
No, we were just letting, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve the fiscal year '23 year-end transfers.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
So, so wait a minute, let me ask one quick question. So, so the fact that we've just listed them in our agenda is good, good for the open meeting? That's all, okay.
That's what we missed last time.
And a letter will be sent.
Okay, okay, perfect.
And a letter will be sent to rectify it, it's in your pack, in the board docs packet, so that will go out to the complaint there.
Yep, okay, great, thank you.
We're going to, oh, thank you, Marie.
Good night.
Good night. So no town managers update, we're going to have our acting assistant town manager give us her first update. Welcome, Paige.
Thank you, and it's a long one.
Yes, well.
So buckle up, there's been a lot going on. Obviously, my side of things are more project-oriented, so I'm going to give you some project-oriented. For those who don't know, the Central Street Veterans Parking Lot was paved. We received a $50,000 earmark with the help of Rep. Barrows and Senator Feeney. That had to be used by the end of the fiscal year, so in late June, the primary part of the lot was paved. There is some remaining work closer to the buildings that needs to be done, but that was not able to be done by the large contractor, so the DPW is working on plans to get that work done. But in the meantime, the lot looks fabulous, and really, some of the areas were down to dirt, so it really is an upgrade. We have also, just so you know, we are no, not done striping it. We did the easy striping, but as you know, we're always continuing to work on improving the lot. We had a site visit out there already to look at the possibility of, we might actually be able to tweak a few spaces out there. We're also looking, as always, we talk about the dumpster locations, and so we are not done out there, but it's, we're also able to add an accessible parking space, which is something that the Disability Commission was really hoping for, and it looks like we're going to be able to provide it. So in all, this has been a great win for that lot, and we still have some more signage to go up there, so it's a, it's a big positive. The East Street, Coacassett Street project is beginning tomorrow, and the contractor was on-site today unloading curbs and plans to do the layout work tomorrow. I'm reading from notes from Chris. The contractor is planning four weeks for the construction with only two or three days when detours will be utilized. The remaining construction days, which run from 7:00 to 4:00, will be reduced to one lane with a police detail directing traffic throughout the area. At the end of each day, the roadway will be returned to allow two lanes of traffic. And with as much advanced notice as possible, they'll use message boards for detour days along with social media, website, and regional dispatch to adjust Google and Waze. And Chris plans on doing a weekly recap with a look ahead for Fridays, so. We also have a story map done by our GIS person, and we can put that up on the web as well, on our website, to really show how this project is going to lay out. So it's, you know, I know there's been some, some challenges with the West Street project, which is a lot more involved, but I do also think DPW has had a lot of lessons learned. And some of it's not in their control, because contractors are, you know, sometimes do things a little different than planned, but Chris has a real good plan for how to address this, and we do anticipate the disruption on this project to be much less.
Paige, I'm sorry, do you want to, while you're on that note, the, the quick update from Chris on West Street?
Sure, why don't you, I don't have it in front of me if you want to read it.
Oh, yeah, I'll read it. So just to piggyback off what Paige was talking about, from Chris, I'm, from Chris, I'm currently projecting to be completed by August 18th, if not the 11th. They completed the water main installation today up to the existing eight-inch duct tile line near Connet Road. They need a pressure test, chlorinate, flush, and get a clean bacteria sample prior to making all the service inside street connections. It should take about 10 days to complete the house connections along with the campground and Daniel Street. They are also scheduled to be doing some more paving this week to try to, try and complete the trench repair.
Great, thank you. So that was West Street. Walnut Street, project near and dear to my heart. So that project is moving along. The Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions for the signal work at Walnut and Commercial Street, and now that, that allows the DPW to go out to bid. And I have a note here that I got from the private housing developer, and people are always asking what the schedule is. So as you know, it's 200 units of all affordable housing, and it's made significant progress. The developer has received preliminary approval for state funding of Phase 1, that's 141 units, from the Executive Housing, Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and is expected to receive funding commitments from EO HLC this summer. They've gotten a few more approvals. The project is projecting a financing closing and the commencement of construction in Q1 of 2024. Building 1, which is 61 units, is expected to complete construction in 18 months, so that would be Q3 of '25. And Building 2, 80 units, is expected to complete three months after Building 1, so I estimated that to be Q4 of '24 or early 2026, I mean, sorry, Q4 of 2025 or early 2026. And then, once the funding is committed for Phase 1, the developer will submit funding applications for Phase 2 to construct the remaining 59 units. So there is progress being made, which is great, because it's extraordinarily competitive to get housing funding out there. So this is a great project. Greg Spear always says the stars are aligning, knock on wood, so we're, we're making progress out there. We do have folks contacting us to see about getting on the waitlist. I'm not sure, you know, they're not ready yet to start taking applications, but always you can reach out to the housing authority. It's good to get on the waitlist in general, but for right now, you know, it's so far off that they're not yet planning occupancy of that building. The Veterans Service Office has moved to the Senior Center, and as a result of that and, and the consolidation of those departments, we've actually been able to expand hours for the Senior Center. It was always open late on Wednesdays, but now it'll be open late on Tuesdays. So starting next week, the hours of the Senior Center will be 8:00 to 4:00 on Mondays and Thursdays, and then 8:00 to 6:00 on Tuesday, which is new, and then also Wednesday, and then 8:00 to 12:30 on Friday, and that begins next week, so that's great. Last week, the Chief Grace and Chief Noonan, Deputy Chief Noonan and I attended a meeting with Mass DOT, the Mass Department of Transportation. I had initiated contact with them, and we're already starting on World Cup planning. As mentioned, it's the equivalent of eight Super Bowls. It is massive. So we had a team of about 20 folks on teams from, and most from Mass DOT, starting to discuss it. They were very appreciative, because I don't know that it was on their radar screen, but we've all acknowledged that the amount of effort that's going to go into this is going to be a huge effort. And the reason why I think it's so important is my fear is Foxborough will be forgotten. You know, it's, it's a, Boston is the host city, and Massachusetts is heavily involved, but really, it's Foxborough. So we wanted to make sure we had a seat at the table very early on. We also believe there might be a pool of money to assist with infrastructure improvements, and we want to get in on that early. A lot of this infrastructure will take a couple years to plan and permit. So we had a great meeting, and we are looking to meet with them, which we're pushing for once a month. They're a little hesitant to jump into that, but I think once they realize the scale and scope, that, that it will soon be monthly. I already mentioned that we got the grant to start discussions of the MBTA communities, and so, then on to HR. As you all know, I believe that the HR director's last day was July 5th, so we're in a transition phase. We're using an HR consultant, she's got office hours here one day a week, and we, we hope to fill that position relatively soon, within the next couple months, because we do, we have a real shortage on HR support right now. We have a new Assistant Finance Director, Brandon Roberts, started yesterday, and he comes to us from the town of Concord, where he's worked for the last five years, and he worked with Marie, so it's great, they've worked together. He began as their budget analyst and was then promoted to Senior Budget and Operations Analyst. His areas of expertise are procurement, financial analysis, and budgeting, including developing and monitoring several multimillion-dollar budgets. The FY '24 budget for Concord was $132 million. That, Concord has won several GFA budget book awards, and he's strong in long-range forecasting and building monthly year, multi-year capital improvement plans. So Marie believes that his personality, knowledge, and skills will blend in well with the finance team, so we're very excited for Brandon. We also have a new Veterans Service Officer. He, Scott Blake, is going to be our new agent and, officer, and he's going to start August 7th. He's currently the Rainham VSO, and also expected to be a great fit. He will be having a meet and greet on August 1st at 10:00 a.m., and so that he can get the lay of the land. And, I'm sorry, the, the Human Services Department will be hosting a public meet and greet on Tuesday, August 8th, at 3:45 at the Senior Center. So that's the public one. I think he's coming to meet the staff August 1st. And then we do, from an HR, more HR, we do have several open positions in the DPW. We have a labor slash driver for Highway and Tree and Park, a water technician, a DPW Department Administrator, and a water and sewer account coordinator, hence the need for an HR, HR assistance. On our website, you might have noticed a very robust upfront page on our website, thank you, Christina. We have a sidewalk strategic plan survey that's out, that is available on the town website and through lots of social media. That closes July 28th. And another exciting one is the Log Cabin RFP. That's the property over at 72 Mill Street, there's a cabin, three-bedroom cabin, that is going to be for lease, and through procurement laws, it's required that we've done through an RFP. That bid opening is Friday, so if anybody is seeking to submit, they have to get it in ASAP, because bids are due Friday at like, 10:00 a.m. Yes, so, that's an important one. And then we have a couple town property use permits. There's going to be filming uptown and on recreation properties on August 21st through the 23rd after 3:30. One of the areas is over on the recreation land, and it was noted that it will be after camp, so not to worry. And we are going to, Leah can attest to that, we are working with the JCs to discuss vehicles driving on the Common. We had a little situation the other day with the farmer's market, and it made sense, they were trying to unload their band equipment, but it was just concerning because it was having a vehicle suddenly going through the Common. Two vehicles. So we're working with the JCs already to address that, and that is all I have.
Awesome. Any questions? All right, great. Selectments update. On a new business, there are some new flashing crosswalks installed. I don't know if you noticed the one sort of South Street and Commercial Street, I noticed that today. That's going to be kind of pretty crucial for that one a lot. Amazing how many cars just blow through that without seeing pedestrians. Was there another one too?
The other one's over on School Street.
Yeah, Station 1.
Oh, okay.
So Central Street and the Common, and then.
It's kind of the midline between the Common, because we can't put one up at Station 1, Station 1, so it's kind of down in the middle.
Okay, oh, great. Also, the farm stand opens, open 7:14, so go down there and buy your fruits and vegetables down there. Under old business, got to sort of congratulate Primo's owners, Chris and Linda Gunn, on 35 years of being up uptown. Sad, certainly sad to see them go, but maybe it'll allow Chris to get on the golf course a little bit more often. We already talked about West Street update. Anybody else have any? Did I miss anything? Yes?
I got an email complaint from a resident about the car show. They said it was challenging to get around, there was no signage, they thought another location would be better than the center of town. Just putting that out there, passing it along.
I didn't get that one, so.
No, I, no, I got, I got one also, and I think the signage was a limit, definitely limiting. I think it could have been a little bit better signage for where the detours were. You know, sometimes we do close down that part of Central Street, we did it for something, when did we do it? Wasn't.
The car show.
Light up town.
Yeah, light up town.
Light up town, the lighting. But I think we had a better, did a better job for that deflecting traffic than we did the car show. I, I agree with whoever said that, and I think that would be one of the first things we discuss next year. There was a car show before, wasn't it behind the first time they did it? Was it in the Commercial Street parking lot?
The Central Street.
Central Street parking lot?
They still shut down the road though.
They, they shut down still, they just had it back there.
But they still shut down the road, okay. Oh, I think signage should be better next time.
The first, first time, it was just people raved about it, the first time. I don't, I don't, I don't think we got a complaint first time around, so I'm not sure whether it was the same, just happened this time, maybe certain person, or, you know, or whatever, but.
But I, but I went, I thought it was awesome, it was hot. It was a hot day, but some of those.
We had our new lot with no stripes on it, so it was no, I went back there to park just for the fun of it. It was, it was no man's land, but it was, it worked, it worked, but it was hot.
But the cars are cool.
They are.
The cars are definitely cool. Anything else?
Okay, well, mine's kind of, maybe, maybe just to the board, maybe we can also figure out, I mean, obviously, we, we talked about right now that the town manager's position isn't full. Maybe we could, a couple of things, maybe within the next meeting or two, we can put on the agenda for us to have a discussion on what the next step is going to be for us.
That will be on August's agenda.
Okay, all right, perfect.
August 15th, yes.
And, and the other thing, maybe just maybe for that meeting, where, where we used Bernie to help us navigate the first time around, somebody happened to throw at me that, and I'm not sure what his, with our contract with him said, but sometimes when things don't work out in such a short period of time, he may come back in at no additional cost. I mean, obviously, you don't get your, our money back because things didn't work out, but maybe just to see if, if there's any verbiage in there that, you know, if that's what we decide to do, is to reach back out to him, just if we know whether that's an option or not, or not an option.
Ah, great question. Yeah, so that will be on the agenda for August 15th.
And then the only other thing, I have a meeting tomorrow that we just set up, just to kind of talk about the farmer's market and the, the JCs concern the Common. It was great to kind of overlap them, but just talking to the JCs, they have some thoughts on, you know, how maybe like logistically things can work better, so just getting the two groups and Paige together to just talk about it and reflect on it, now that there's been a couple of them. And then, you know, I'm of the opinion, I don't think cars should be driving on the Common ever, there can be damage to the fence, you know, everyone should kind of have to unload in the same place. I get, like, you know, to get the nativity set on the Common, we're going to, you know, have to have, have some cars up there, or, you know, cable access is a whole different story, but.
Was there, to unload for some of the, I, I, I didn't go this past week, but I went the week before, but I'm, I'm there, they're already set up. Oh, was ju, just for the JC, the JCs?
Yeah, so they actually pulled in in front of South Street Pizza, and then continued up the entire length of the Common through children, through vendors' tables. And I understand that they had equipment to unload, but the people working the farmer's market have to do the same thing and unload their stuff?
Yeah.
I mean, it's just seems like from a risk perspective and a safety perspective, I don't think we should have cars on the Common, period. And if they do need to come on the Common, that should be a reach out to Katie, you know, or someone in the town manager's office to kind of get that approval. So, you know, we looked at the, the town use property rules and regulations, and we didn't think of this, but I think it is something to think about and talk about, and, talk about loading and unloading tomorrow, really.
I agree with the plan. I, I, I thought you were going the other way when you said the JCs, I thought you were going to say that the, the farmer's market people drove on the Common to unload.
No, no, and the J, the JCs completely understood, like, there's no, you know.
Yeah.
I think everyone understood.
Yeah.
It's just, it's good to talk about it, and they, you know, maybe we have like a, a cone out for a loading/unloading zone, just, we're going to talk about ideas on how to make it work for everyone.
You want it to be fair, because I mean, like Leah said, the folks are lugging their vegetables and all their stuff from, you know, across the whole Common, and then they see a car coming down the middle, you know, to unload to the bandstand, I mean, they would probably all love to be able to do that. So I think it's a consistency thing, that we make sure we're fair.
And just to, you know, you mentioned the farmer's market and stuff, but there are some new vendors, and, yeah, my daughter and I, we kind of ate our way through, like, we, we got fudge, cookies, popcorn, pickles, like, you know.[1682.86] went, we, we got fudge, cookies, popcorn, pickles, like, you know.
Those cookies are.
We didn't buy, we didn't buy, we didn't buy any vegetables.
Lemon meringue cookies.
We didn't buy any vegetables, but, but al- also, you know, I said to my daughter, I said, well, you know, we're there Thursday. I work all weekend. I'm like, I'm not going to be cooking the vegetables, so I said, but the fudge will last till next week and the popcorn, but just, I mean, it was exciting just to see some new vendors. It was, it was nice.
Have you tried the everything but the kitchen sink cookie?
Oh, I didn't have that one, but I had a raspberry pillow that I will be back for for sure. It was, and we, we did, we did buy one her special, whatever the special was that night because, you know, I always say, you know, when people ask me if they come to a restaurant, I'm like, get a special because it's here for today, right? You may not get it tomorrow, but yeah, it was, it was just nice, some, some really nice new, new vendors. It was nice to see.
Yeah.
I think they struggled a little bit last year. I know the weather was an issue and stuff, so it was, it was nice that we're, you know, it was full.
It is hard, they've become so popular that, I mean, I know we have a big one in Franklin and I tried to get the bread vendor to come here and they said Thursday's like our only day that we don't, we just can't commit to another place. So it's really challenging because there's only so many vendors and they're already booked, so it is a competitive thing, but we have, we have built up, they've done a great job this year building up. We had, I got fruit, blueberries, strawberries, cookies, that was my.
Blueberries were very good as well.
They were good.
All right, anything else under selectmen's update? Great, we're going to move on to action items, but before we do, Katie.
Hi.
Do you remember the regu- because we're going to be approving a lot of extended hours. I was under the impression that the, to, to open up early for brunch, they needed to serve food, but do patient, patients, patrons have to buy food or just the availability of food? Do you remember that regulation?
I believe it was just the availability.
Okay. Okay, so.
And that's why we asked for them to give us a menu, whether it was going to be something like a brunch or a limited menu or like game time. So I was just thinking it was along the same lines that Chief Grace was saying.
Okay. And, and skipjacks, putting on there that they have to buy food is more a marketing thing than a regulation thing.
Well, there could be their requirement.
Right, 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 right.
Well, what, what I was going to say, we didn't need Chief for it, so when, when Dennis was asking, I, what I was thinking when, when, when she said you didn't have to necessarily be purchasing the food, for, for them, I remember when they've been before us, they do, you know, much more food sales, they're, you know, they're, they're more a restaurant. Granted, on a game day, there are people up there, they're consuming alcohol, but I remember one time when they came up about their alcohol license, or I think I might remember they had, they had a violation, this is going back probably two or three years ago, they came and they said, you know, listen, you know, we're, we're on top of it because we're selling mostly food, we're very serious about the alcohol that's sold. So they may be just saying, hey, listen, we don't want somebody to come in, take up a table and have a beer. They want you to come in and, and they're, they're more of a restaurant. So that may be just their, their perception of it, Dennis, not that they're required to, but they may just be, if you're going to come in and sit down at a table, you're going to have something to eat, so.
The A B C C requires you to have food. That's just to offer it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
And then.
Go ahead, Katie.
Apologies. Dennis, your question, so most of these are just for the four Patriots home 1:00 PM games. Skipjack's and Davio's is for all Sundays as they are going to be starting their brunch programs. And then in regards to the VFW, 9:04 is Labor Day. 11:11 is the day after Veterans Day, they are having an event, and 11:23 is the day before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I was probably spending too much time on this. I'm, I'm more going to the public content, like Axel and Byrne, there's, there's language in there that specifically says food, alcohol can't be served unless food is served.
But that's their letter, that's not ours. They're reading us that letter, we're not reading them that letter.
Let me just call it up here.
That's their request.
Right.
So anyone could, could word their.
Yeah, I had everyone reach out with, because I, instead of having them come to me.
Please send me a letter, no later, and June 30th is to make the request so that they can be on in July. Levin Select Board may please add to the letter that food will be required should a guest order an alcoholic beverage. I'm just looking for clarity there, I mean.
Yeah, but you have to serve food.
You have to serve food.
Correct.
Right, I guess Dennis, that was probably my fault just in how it was worded.
Yeah.
Maybe required at the restaurant versus required to be ordered.
Food has to be available.
Correct.
That's fine.
Okay. So let's go back to like 13.1. Let's, let's make the.
The motion?
Motion for us and discussion.
Motion to approve the additional events of the New England Patriots 2023 season beginning August 10th to, sorry, August 10th through 12:31, a second to Luke Combs concert on 7/21, premier lacrosse league quarterfinals on 9/4, and a Carol G concert on 9/28 to the craft sports and entertainment 2023 annual light, annual entertainment license.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Yeah, I, I kind of want to bring up once again the fact that it is kind of frustrating as a board member to see elsewhere that, you know, a, a concert is, is being, is already sold out before they came in front of us. So I think somewhere along the line, we might need to speak with Jess and even if they come to us with one item, come to us early enough.
And, and I noticed on the, on the data sheet, Katie, there's nothing with the date that it's filled out. Like that would be helpful to me, like who knows, maybe these happen here for a while and it took, you know, stadium advisory had to look at it, we had to look at it. I guess we just don't have any view of when we got these, but like Carol G, I remember, I've never heard of her, and she's selling out a stadium. And I, you know, like when we see these first before we've seen, I'm not saying we have to approve them all, but, you know, the Luke Combs one especially is just getting really tight and clearly there was more notice. So I don't know when we got the Luke Combs one, just kind of curious, Katie?
Of course, I'm trying to look up the, the act, the date that I got them, and I completely agree, it wasn't for a lack of reaching out to make sure that they had been submitted, but I can add the date just so that even just the memo that I send out to you guys just saying, hey, you know, this is the overview, it's gone through, you know, the appropriate But I do, I'm not, I won't get it in time before your, your motion, but I know that it, it was extremely late of when that they were submitted. I know that the second night of Luke Combs was already sold out before we received the data sheet, unfortunately.
Right.
Yeah, so I think it's just being in better communication.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Posed, none?
Okay. All right, motion to approve the extended hours request for Davio's Northern Italian Steakhouse at 236 Patriot Place to serve alcohol, starting at 10:00 AM on all Sundays in 2023, starting September 10th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? You comfortable?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, good. All those in favor? Good.
All right, motion to approve, sorry, my computer's still catching up, motion to approve the extended hours request for Skipjack's at 226 Patriot Place to serve alcohol, starting at 10:00 AM on all Sundays, starting August 6th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi. Excuse me, Doc?
Yeah.
Those data sheets were submitted via email on June 21st.
Okay. So, really just.
One month prior.
Month.
And department heads have to review and.
Right.
Stadium Advisory Committee has to review.
No, thank you, Katie.
Well, and we, we're only meeting, you know, once a month, but I, I think the fact that it's got here, got to Katie with the concert already sold, still, you know, sold out. So, so, yeah, I mean, it's been a month, but we, you know, and, and we can say that we didn't meet twice a month, but it's still kind of late for, for it to get to Katie, into Katie's hands, probably.
Okay.
And, and that's something that we can discuss with them. Doc does have a meeting with them August 17th with, with Jess and Cassie, so it's something that we can definitely review with them.
Okay.
In person.
Yeah, great, thank you.
All right, so am I on to the next one?
13.4.
Okay, we added, okay, we ended. Motion to approve the extended hours request for Foxborough VFW post 2626 at 337 Cochasset Street to serve alcohol, starting at 10:00 AM on September 4th, October 8th, October 22nd, October 5th, November 11th, November 23rd, and December 23rd. And then just based on Chief Grace's, I would say, you know, subject to police's verification that they're comfortable with that as well.
Well, so, so should I wait and then when you say discussion instead of asking now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait for a second.
Yep.
So, I'm not in favor of this, so I was seconding it, make.
For further discussion?
Second, yeah, second.
Okay. Go ahead, Steph.
All right, so, I mean, obviously Katie gave us what, you know, what the reason was for a couple of them. So Katie, so are the other four dates, 1 o'clock football games? The, the 10:08?
No.
I think you told us what the 9:04 and the 11:11 and the 11:23 were.
Yeah, so the other remaining dates, October 8th, October 22nd, November 5th, and December 3rd are all Patriot 1 o'clock games.
Well, so yes.
Okay, yeah, so, so basically, no, no offense to the VFW, I'm not singling them out. I mean, I, I just feel like when we do this, we're doing it because those are businesses up at Patriot Place and they're going to be affected because there are going to be, you know, 60,000 people there. And I feel like in the past, when someone else has reached out to us, it's for a specific reason. Like, like if you told me those dates were, they have a function, there's a baby shower being held there, you know, something, so I'm, I'm just not sure how we feel real, you know, in the normal time would be noon, correct? I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm not singling them out from anywhere else other than their location and what the fact that it's a, you know, so do we, have we done this for?
I think we have done it for Jake and Joe's, I want to say. You know what I mean?
I think we did do it for Jake and Joe's.
I need Katie to, I feel like Jake and Joe's has requested early openings for Patriots games. I, I'm not confident in that. I know they have for like UFC fights, but.
Stayed up late.
Yeah.
Yeah, later.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I'm just, I don't see the correlation with a Patriots game.
Or the day after Thanksgiving or the day after Veterans Day.
Or even, I'll be honest with you, would, yeah, or, you know, I mean, obviously it's a VFW, so, I mean, those, those dates, maybe they have something or they're, they have veterans coming in. I guess it's the same thing, like what, what's the difference between 10 to 12? I would be more if it was a function, because if you're inviting guests like, you know, to a shower, to a birthday party, I, you know, I don't know, and you want to serve alcohol, I just don't get the correlation between the Patriots being on, what that 10 to 12 does for them. You know, I mean, I just feel like if we do this, we're going to set a precedent that, so if we okay for them, so if Station One comes forward and says, can we serve at 10:00?
Can I just interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
Because I'm reading it.
Sure.
So it looks like they're actually looking for 1:00 PM on September 4th, so the game time start date, same thing with October 8th, 5th, and 3rd. So they're not looking for 10:00 AM on those days, so I'd have to amend the motion. They're requesting.
Right.
1:00 PM, they're only requesting 10:00 AM on November 23rd and November 11th. So that might change things a little bit.
Okay.
Because they're requesting time of the game.
Okay.
On those game days, it's the 10:00 AM looks like more veterans types holidays, Labor Day, if I'm looking off the top of my head, Veterans Day, and then the day after Thanksgiving.
It's actually Thanksgiving, isn't it?
Is it Thanksgiving?
Thursday.
Oh, yeah, Thursday, yep, yep.
Yep.
So it's those three holidays, so.
Yeah.
Just to amend, we'll have to amend that motion.
So, so why are they, so, so if they're asking for 1 o'clock, is it, is it when their license?
Because they don't open till 3:00.
3:00 is their normal.
3:00 is their normal, so they want to open at 1:00 for the game.
So their, their license says, their license says 3:00 based on their hours of operation.
Correct.
Right, so Steph, I had, I had said to them, and I hadn't gotten confirmation, why would they open up right, or why would they request right at 1 o'clock for the Patriots games, just in particular, because if they're trying to, you know, just create a buzz of how, you know, watching the game at their establishment, wouldn't they want at least noon, if not earlier? And I didn't get a confirmation there, so I thought, at least if they had till 10:00 or up to, as early as 10:00 AM, they could at least, you know, try to draw a crowd before the game. I can amend it and just have exactly the times that they have on their letter, if that's.
Yeah, I don't think we give them more than what they're asking for.
Is the, is the normal, is the normal time on Sundays noon, or it's just based on what your hours of operation are?
It is noon, but I think they're doing the right thing where their normal hours of operation are 3:00 PM.
Oh, yeah.
Asking the board's permission instead of just doing it.
I mean, i- if you're not going to be able to serve when the game is started, yeah, they're not going to get people there. I, I get that. I, I just, 10:00 for me, I was like a 1 o'clock game, you're not dealing with, you know, so if their normal operation, normal time would have been 3:00, I'm, I'm okay with 1:00. I just thought 10:00, you know, there's, there's a reason why we grant that many hours earlier, you know, so 1:00 or even 12:00, that's, that's the normal time on a Sunday. So I haven't, don't have any problem giving them a, a normal time on a Sunday.
They do have 10:00 AM though on two days, two holidays, Veterans Day and Thanksgiving.
Labor Day, Veterans Day.
Yeah. Well, no, Labor Day looks like 1:00.
Oh, yeah, you're right, yeah, sorry. This is very small print.
It is. I have glasses. So, yeah, it looks like Veterans Day and Thanksgiving are 10:00 AM.
Well, that's kind of, you know, the whole Thanksgiving Day, a lot, a lot of times, you know, people they're, they're heading to or from a Thanksgiving game, I, I can almost see them wanting to be able to participate, to participate in having that time for service, but, you know.
But aren't most people hopping in their cars and going to the game? It's not like it's, you know, you're sitting and watching in a bar like the Patriots.
Well, I know, but I, I'm not a drinker, but from what I hear, Thanksgiving morning.
A lot of football games on Thanksgiving now.
Yeah, that's true.
They have triple, do they have three games now?
Thanksgiving morning is a big day for.
NFL, yeah.
For, for people to hang somewhere.
1, 4, and 8.
Leah, if you refresh, I updated the motion.
12:31, yeah.
Yeah. Seth, I know you weren't in favor, so.
Yeah, I mean, 1:00, fine.
Okay.
10:00 feels like a safe, just increase, decreasing public safety to the point where I don't think that's necessary.
So what I'd like to do is, is maybe redo the motion to approve the four Patriots games and maybe get clarification on the other three dates? We got plenty of time, why they want to open up at 10:00, or unless you know, Katie, why they want to open up at 10:00 on Labor Day, on.
No, and there's literally no context.
Or Turkey Day.
Right. Huh?
Just Thanksgiving and Veterans Day is the 10:00 AM.
Right. So can we, what do you think, Katie? Approve the four Patriots at 1:00 or even 12:00, but get more clarification on the other three days?
Sure, I'm happy to reach out to them just to ask for those.
Okay.
I can ask for all of it if you want. If you want to just wait and say, do you really want to open up at 1:00, 1:00 PM for a 1:00 PM Patriots game, or do you guys want noon?
Right.
It's, it's whatever you guys feel comfortable doing.
I mean, 1:00, if that's what they're looking for.
They asked for one, I'm, yeah, I'm.
I know that they're looking to bring in a whole bunch of new people, I think they know who this is going to show up. I don't know if they're looking to bring in a whole bunch of new people, I think they know who this is gonna show up.
Who's gonna come and watch the game on big screen T V.
Right.
Do we want to have the caveat there, pending confirmation that, that the police agree that everything's been in good order after?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So is, is, so is everybody comfortable with that, approving the four one o'clock Sunday Patriots games? And then have Katie go back and clarify the other three dates?
And we can probably approve the September fourth, because they're only looking for one o'clock anyway, so.
Okay.
So I would propose that we approve September fourth, October eighth, November fifth, December third, and October twenty-second at one. And then they'll come back to us on November twenty-third and November eleventh.
Just for clarification, we got plenty of time. Okay.
All right, so let me reread that motion then. Motion to approve the extended hours request for Foxborough V F W post twenty twenty-six at three thirty-seven Co-Cassett Street to start serving, serving alcohol at one P M on Monday, September fourth, Sunday, October eighth, Sunday, November fifth, Sunday, December third, and Sunday, October twenty-second at one P M, pending the police confirmation that they are in support of this request.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
All right, and motion to take no action on November twenty-third and November eleventh.
Okay.
Pending confirmation from the applicant.
Right, second, or second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Thirteen five.
All right, motion to approve the extended hours request for Bar Louie Tavern and Grill at two thirty-two Patriot Place, Red Robin at two oh one Patriot Place, Scorpion Bar at two fifty-three Patriot Place, Six String Grill and Stage at two seventy-five Patriot Place, Splitsville at two twenty Patriot Place, Axel and Byrne at two sixty-seven Patriot Place, to open and serve alcohol, starting at ten A M on October eighth, October twenty-second, November fifth, and December third.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
So at least four or five of these require food to be served before alcohol will be served. I'm just saying, is this.
They, they all have to have the ability.
It's not what it says.
They can make it more strict, they can require people to order food if they don't have to.
Well, it's unclear whether that's, it sounds like they think it's our policy.
Maybe they're trying to comply with the Dora, maybe too, they, during the game events, do they want to have people able to walk outside? And that's part of the rules of the Dora requirements, the Chief Grace.
As Stephanie said, coming from the industry, maybe they don't want to use a table.
Yeah, I, I mean.
All of them have this language, with the purchase of alcohol, we will require food items to be purchased with the beverage.
That, 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 that could be, that could be their, their thing, Dennis, honest to God, like, you know, most people are probably gonna go and say, I want to grab something to eat, but, you know, so people are gonna sit down, you're gonna have two people take a table, and from what I hear, a lot of those places have lines out the door waiting to get in before the game. I'm, I'm never up there, that's just what I've heard. So what they're gonna do is, someone's gonna come in, two people are gonna sit down at a table, and they might have somebody in line who wants to actually come in and eat and have a beverage. So, um, that, my guess is that's their policy, because they're gonna say, if you're gonna sit at a table, you're gonna order some food.
And they could require them to get a Shirley Temple, too, they can really require anything they want.
Yeah.
But our regulation is they have to serve food.
Right.
And may, maybe, maybe that's when they're, they're applying, well, all, all these places have gotten extended hours before.
Except Axel and Byrne, which is new.
So, so my guess, uh, guess is that either this is what, you know, I mean, we'd have to go back and, we'd have to go back and look at last year's requests.
I bet they gave a template, I bet you someone gave them a template.
Yeah, I don't want to make sure of this.
No, I, I know, but Katie's clarified that already.
Yeah.
That, that she, you know, when she used available or required, she already clarified using the word required in her response back.
In terms of guidance to Katie, we do not require that food be served if alcohol beverages are being served.
And again, you could say, we require it to be served, that it's required to be available, it's like a definition of.
Right.
Food has to be available.
But we don't want specifically, you know, in order to get a drink, you have to order food.
We don't, but they can.
Right.
Yes.
I'm just clarifying.
Right, okay, that's our, that's our practice.
And, and basically, Dennis, I'm, I'm gonna tell you something, just because working at establishments gets affected when there's a stadium event. So our business, like, is crushed when there's anything going on at the stadium. So for them, they're going to lose their regular people that come there on a Sunday to eat. And so they may be saying, okay, if we're gonna lose our food service, we're gonna require people to come in to have something to eat. I'm, I'm sure they're not gonna say, you have to have a burger, you have to have this, but my guess is that's their way of, of, of not losing a, a day of food service as well, you know, because there's a stadium event. So that's just a guess on my part, I want to speak for the businesses, but I know what, um, what a stadium event can do to a restaurant, not just a bar, you know, where, where people are rarely going in just to drink. So if they're gonna lose their food service, that might be their way of maintaining, um, what they would like to have for sales for the day. That's just a guess, but.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
All right, um, sorry, it's slow when I'm going between. Motion to approve the use of public application for the Sharon Triathlon on August thirteenth from eight A M to ten A M at the corner of Willow and East Street, hosted by Max Performance.
Second.
This is a yearly one, which is why it's on an action item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the use of public way application for the Low Rider Depot, L R D X N E U, Summer Showdown Event on eight twenty, from twelve P M to four P M at ten, Ten Annette Road.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?